Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, our home doctor is Dr. Koch and won the PACTA award, which is Pennsylvania Association of Career Technical Administrators. He overwhelmingly won the award and all of the executive directors throughout the state on the both schools and the assistant executive directors have the vote and he overwhelmingly won. So we congratulate him on that. Also, our, we reappointed Angela Peterson from St. Clair. She is our board president, wonderful president, does a great job. And we reappointed our vice president, Joe Appleton from Harlem. And also, we, the board approved monitor updates on the student admissions policy, which is going to help, uh, because we are so proud out there. It's going to help us with extra students. And last but not least, we have our turkey dinner, uh, today I think it was. We, the primary school made two hundred and fifty dinners and they sold it online within over a week and a half. So their dinner on their, their turkey giveaway, my giveaway, seventy-five dollars. And if they would have, uh, buy that dinner, you're looking at two twenty-five, two hundred and fifty dollars. So everyone's under the list. What happened to you? Okay, thank you. Anything, Miss Sexton from Shasta? No, nothing, nothing to report. Okay, um, moving on to board meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes for November eleventh, twenty twenty-five? Motion made by Mr. Chor. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss King. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the agreement with E.S. Parkslar and per the attached quote? Second made by Miss King, second by Mr. Chor. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, can we get an explanation of what this is and the need for this?
Yes, um, the primary school administration came to me with this program as a supplement to use during the entire school year individually between maps to see growth. Um, the goal for us has always been causing growth. Um, the primary school kids K one and two do not take any state assessments. They wanted to see growth throughout the year. This is a supplemental on our program, um, fully through them, that they will, um, work in a game type of setting where it's fun for them. But everything that they do is adaptive, it's fun for them, they get to learn. But everything they do is also used, um, through maps and gives them personalized data throughout the, uh, personalized experiences, personalized data to the teachers to make them better each and every day. So they asked if they could enter into this agreement and, uh, through, uh, Dr. Sag, they asked for this.
Okay. And do you have any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the student enrollment agreement with Leslie Schools as a act? Motion made by Miss King. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chor. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the community service project in support of the Bridge Road Athletic Association? Motion made by Mrs. Montani. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Trainer. Any discussion on this item?
Good thing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the human resources report for November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five?
Second.
Motion made by Miss Sexton, second by Mr. Chor. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Charter Valley School District and the Charter Valley Educational Support Personnel Association, effective July first, twenty twenty-six through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine? Motion made by Miss King.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Trainer. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the Act One resolution which certifies that the Charter Valley School District will not raise taxes for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year at a rate that exceeds the school district adjusted Act One index of three point five percent as calculated by the Pennsylvania Department of Education? Motion made by Mr. Chor. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brodsky. Any discussion on this item? So, Joan, do you want to explain that, um, or I'll let you explain?
Okay, yeah, so it's basically just saying that while we are starting to begin our twenty-six, twenty-seven budget process, if we choose to raise taxes, we cannot do so higher than the three point five percent adjusted index.
So it would not go for that item or higher?
Correct.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve that the board authorized the administration to pay invoices, including payroll, as stated after November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, to be ratified at the next school board meeting on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-six? Motion made by Mrs. Montani, second by Mr. Chor. Any discussion on this item?
Just to clarify for the public why we need to do that?
Yes, so because of the way our voting meetings are scheduled, um, we have about six weeks between this meeting and then our next scheduled voting meeting, January thirteenth. So there are some items, the bills, that we do not delay until after that. And also, uh, some hirings that the board has given the authority, that we have open positions that we can fill them as long as they submit all required credentials and the person will pack it and then we can ratify them so that the position doesn't sit unfilled till the thirteenth.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the repairs to the running track gates at the high school stadium by Metro Fence Company Incorporated per attached? Motion made by Miss King. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chor. Any discussion on this item? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the replacement of the barrier farm gate at the high school middle school entrance by Metro Fence Company per attached? Motion made by Miss King. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sexton. Any discussion on this item?
Is this the one coming at the driveway?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve Chelsea Greener's attendance at the Improving Schools Conference, twenty twenty-six, scheduled from January twenty-sixth to January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six? Motion made by Mrs. Montani. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chor. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to accept the two thousand dollar donation from Amy and Kate Anderson to support the school's mission of enriching students' educational experiences by providing televisions to replace ones in the cafe and in other locations deemed appropriate? Motion made by Mr. Chor, second by Mrs. Montani. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. President, could we, uh, send them a thank you letter to you and for don't, uh?
Sure, sir. Yeah, that is, that is nice, that's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six school board meeting dates? Motion made by Miss King, second by Mr. Chor. I would like to amend this, um, so Kelly, uh, can you change the location? We're going to move, uh, school board meeting, uh, to the middle school cafeteria, okay? So the date, uh, or the, uh, the location will need to change. Um, and then the taping of the meetings will soon follow after that. There might be a few, uh, board meetings that do not get taped in twenty twenty-six. But, uh, we're shooting for February, uh, for the board meetings, uh, to start to be taped from that fixed location, uh, which would be the middle school cafeteria. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the first reading to update policy zero one one, principles for governance and leadership? Motion made by Mr. Montani, second by Mrs. Trainer. Any discussion on this item? Just as a reminder, when we update policies, we'll update the first reading this evening. The second meeting, uh, the second reading will come January thirteenth, uh, our first school board meeting, uh, of twenty twenty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the request from the Scott Townsfield Police Department to utilize intermediate school facilities on Saturday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-six, from seven thirty a.m. until one thirty p.m. for police officer testing. Facilities are to be used include the board meeting room to amaze him and track him. I further move that the board authorize the district's maintenance staff to ensure that the track is clear of any snow or ice as needed or directed by the administration to coordinate scheduling and access with Mr. Maple and school personnel. Motion made by Mr. Chor, second, uh, Mr. Montani. Any discussion on this item? This is annually done, uh, so that's, that's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes.
I have a question, sort of related to, uh, the intermediate school track. Uh, I walk there pretty often and let's just say there's a pretty, uh, significant yeast problem there right now. Um, is, and that's not a new problem, I mean, it's been ongoing off and on for years and years. Is there any way that can be addressed?
It's funny you say this, because, uh, Dr. Sag and I just had a conversation with a custodian here about that. And what he told me was years ago, they had a company that came in and did something, whatever they treated or whatever they did, and it kind of chased them away for a little while, but they came back and it hasn't been done for a while. Been some last three years, so I asked them, uh, if we could try to find that information. But he said they fight back and he just wants us to know, uh, I'm approaching them. They're very territorial, so, but, uh, we are actually looking into that right now. In the morning, deer and geese. There's a lot of deer in this neighborhood around these schools too and a lot of geese on that field.
Yeah, especially that, that, that back corner, like when you're looking at the track from, from the driveway, that back right corner of it is, is almost unwalkable because of, of the yeast dropping, so, yeah. I appreciate you looking into that, thank you.
Okay, moving on to public comment on non-agenda items. Miss King?
Yes, this is to invite all residents who want to speak on non-agenda items. Please state the name of the address we can approach the board, we appreciate your interest, keep your comments to two to three minutes. Kelly, does anybody sign up?
Uh, yes, Gabor, Ben, Ben Nettie.
Ben Nettie. Ben Nettie. Yeah, Gabriel Ben Nettie, uh, twenty forty-one. He's got the, um, looks like he's got to move on over. Yes. Gabriel Ben Nettie, twenty forty-one English Drive in Passover. Is this better? All right, thank you, uh, for your time today. Um, as a school board over the last couple of years, I realize you've been dealing with some heavy decisions, including budget, taxes, tax for school services. My wife and I wanted to take this opportunity to tell you our story. And, um, we think it's important, uh, for you to hear the positive impact Charter Valley has had in our family and for the board to understand the areas, um, of the school system that are selling in their mission. and for the board to understand the areas of the school system that are selling in their mission. So, my son Anthony is in second grade at C D Primary School. He was diagnosed with autism at the age of three. Being first time parents, this was a pretty daunting diagnosis. And figuring out back then how to get him, help him ease to progress from preschool in an area that is oversubscribed for autism services, at least at the time, three years ago of us, was also pretty daunting. Autism is a tricky condition that affects people differently. And it also brings giant, brings out giant contradictions to the surface. So in the early years when we worked with him, he struggled to socialize, struggled to speak in complete sentences, and struggled to self-soothe himself from anxiety attacks. At the same time, at the age of four, he could already do some double-digit addition and subtraction. Uh, he could read most five-word words, and he taught himself the Cyrillic alphabet from YouTube, believe it or not. And so you can kind of see the contradictions. Going into kindergarten, we suspected he would need an aid and would need help to progress in certain areas. And we also hoped that he would still be able to excel in other areas, in areas of his strength, you know, developing unevenly. As first time parents, we enrolled him in Charters Valley and honestly, we didn't know really what to expect. Understanding also at the time with this medical diagnosis, there were no other options for him either. Two and a half years later, at this point, my wife and I couldn't be happier with the experience. The Charters Valley Special Education Program in the primary school, the IEP process is esteemed, and the willingness of the administration to listen to the needs for him. So Anthony spends his days in between a life skills classroom and a general education classroom with excursions for speech and occupational therapy. He is in need, the help, he is in need of the help of the para or an aide to fill the gaps in his abilities in his day-to-day tasks in the school. We've been impressed by the willingness of the staff to tailor our program and tailor accommodations for him to allow him to excel in the areas of his strengths, including math and spelling. Within the general classroom, while working in his challenging areas with the help he needs to utilize the skills in the, I'm sorry, utilizing the life skills classroom. I can also attest to the efforts that the primary school has made to include him appropriately in the general education classroom. He isn't easy to keep in his seat and to keep his focus on passing hand. But the willingness to include him to the best extent possible with his peers is impressive. The effort goes beyond the letter of the law or checking the box. To truly do what is best for him. The administration has also been willing to make changes. After we raised concerns this year earlier about certain situations affecting him adversely, the administration was willing to go above and beyond and change the situation, which is clearly in his best interest. So, at this point, I'd like to thank the following people for the impact they have had on Anthony and our family. Primary school principal, Debra Steckco, the special education teachers, Randy Watson and Kayla Loskan, um, the general education teachers for which Anthony was in their classroom, kindergarten through the second grade, Leah Harbalucas, Jane Andrewzak, and Erin Fitzpatrick, the team of paras that worked with him, and while I don't know all of them by name, they've made a big impact. Um, one in particular has a special connection with him, is Sherry Disson. And I'd also like to thank the board and the superintendent for making this possible. So again, as a role in school board, which now has a lot of heavy decisions and feels a lot of complaints, I think it's important for you to hear the positive side of things and the positive impact your decisions, your administration has had on the lives of C D families and very least, our, so thank you.
Mr. Ben Nettie, I just want to say first, thank you for taking the time to recognize our staff. When you have children that are receiving special services, it's a team, right? And there's, a team is made up of more than just the people that attend those IEPs, it's everybody in that building. But it's also mom and dad, so thank you for your role that you play in supporting us. Um, because we have to be in agreement and together to do what's best for each other. So I'm gonna say thank you mom and dad, and thank you for taking the time to say something positive about our staff.
Yes, thank you, you're welcome. I would like to announce that our next board meeting is December second, twenty twenty five, uh, when the board will reorganize. And please note also that the December sixteenth, twenty twenty five school board meeting has been canceled. So next Tuesday is our next board meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mr. Montani, second, Mrs. King, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.